If only it really worked like this in real life.
All right, well, I am told it is six o'clock and we are live, so I'd like to call us to order. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen eighty-five, section thirty dash four dash eighty dash E, the following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald Charlotte Observer, CN two, NWRHI. If I could ask you all, please to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No ma'am.
If not, that will stand by unanimous consent.
Can I have, make a statement before we get started? Some of you may know this, some of you may not know this, but tonight is Ms. Pat Pettis's last board meeting.
She's gonna cry.
The, just wanna, I did some quick math, Pat. I knew if I told you about this, you wouldn't show up here tonight. So I did some quick math and I think it's seventeen years. Let's say, conservatively speaking, twenty meetings a year, that'd be taking some off. It's probably twenty times, do the math, it's probably four hundred and some odd meetings. I'm thinking four fifty, I don't know. I went to Fort Mill School, so I could do it if I had my calculator. Just, just thinking about her, the secretary to school, she's a secretary to the school board. That's her official title. She's my administrative assistant. Just think the importance of this person's work to the community, to, to the public. It's just a true example of a public servant giving, giving back to the, to the town she loves. The, I don't know how to tell you how valuable she is to us and the district, but let's please recognize her at this time.
Yeah.
She is gonna be a tough act to follow, that's for sure. We do have some public participation. I have some cards that were given to me in a certain order, so I will do them in the order that they were recommended. When I call your name, if you'll go to the podium, there's four cards. We have a fifteen minute window, so everybody can have four minutes. Once you get to the podium, you can state your name and address, and then your time will begin. Our first up is Christina Martin.
Good evening. My name is Christina Martin. I am the parent of two students in the Fort Mill School District. My children are both highly competitive swimmers, fortunate enough to train at the number one swim club in the country. They train approximately three hours a day, or three hours a day, seven days a week, swim for NAFO, and plan to swim at the collegiate level. In order to meet the training needs of my athletes and of athletes years and years prior, the Fort Mill School District has allowed students to participate in the Virtual SC online program in place of their fourth block. The Virtual SC is the South Carolina State Board of Education-sponsored online program that provides courses aligned to state standards. The courses are coordinated with high school counselors where grades and progress can be monitored. Just two weeks ago, my daughter was informed that the district has abruptly decided to stop allowing students to participate in any courses outside of the four walls of a high school building. Because they just realized it was a violation of the district's attendance policy since attendance is an online, since attendance in an online course cannot be monitored. The policy that I was told the decision was based on is the Distance Online and Virtual Education Policy. This policy states that the Fort Mill School District will utilize technology-delivered courses as a part of its educational program to increase accessibility and flexibility in the delivery of instruction in the district, and that it may be used when the principal, with agreement from the parent and teachers, determines the student requires a differentiated or accelerated learning environment. However, this policy also has two lines that I and many others strongly feel need to be reviewed or modified. The first is that the student is required to take the virtual online course during the school day and at the school site in a virtual lab. The second is that the student must adhere to the attendance requirements of the district. These two lines contradict the entire premise of an online program. During COVID, the state and the district had to become creative with technology, and the Fort Mill Virtual Academy was created. Students that went back to school participated in a hybrid schedule where they worked from home every other day. Other students continued exclusively online with the Fort Mill Virtual Academy, which existed for over two years. Post-pandemic, I think we've seen that a virtual course option can be a wonderful opportunity under the right circumstances. As our students move on to college, many courses will be offered online. As our students move into careers, many will find themselves working in a virtual environment. This is our world now. As written, this policy not only needlessly takes away an opportunity for my daughter as an elite athlete and high-achieving student, but if no credit-bearing course can be completed outside the four walls of a Fort Mill School District building where attendance cannot be monitored, if we're being equitable, this also means students enrolled in the district cannot participate in an internship or take a dual enrollment credit course for college or an online course over the summer or participate in the State of South Carolina High Schools at Work Program. These are all opportunities that students are offered at every other district in this area and at other top districts in the state. Our students do not deserve less. I believe it would be prudent for the board to modify this policy to remove those lines and allow for a gray area where students with a need to take a credit outside the brick-and-mortar building have the option to do so. Please modify this policy and allow for an appeal process where students who meet certain academic criteria and have special circumstances can have their circumstances heard and be considered for opportunities outside of the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Avery Martin.
Hi, my name is Avery Martin. I'm a ninth grader at Nation Ford. I planned on utilizing the virtual fourth block option to enhance my swimming career while also continuing my education at NAFO during my sophomore and junior years. Both swimming in school are highly important to me, and the virtual option gave me a chance to have a high school experience while also being a high-level athlete. I would like to share some ways that I feel that this decision is not only unfair to me and my family, but also to my peers. This decision was made at the end of the year after applications for other schools were already due, so this really leaves me with no option other than to do homeschooling. Through homeschooling, I would be missing out on a major social element of my day. I would not get to have lunch with my friends every day or have a teacher that inspires me to be the best possible version of myself. I've put a lot of work into school. I'm around fortieth in my class of five hundred. And I'm currently swimming for the best club in the country alongside some of the best athletes in the country who are competing on an Olympic level. The opportunity to be a part of something like that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Fort Mill School District prides themselves on how they put their students' best interests at heart, but I do not understand how making me choose between a sport that will help me pay for college or my high school experience is in my best interest. I understand that there are rules that need to be followed, but I feel that these rules are outdated and need to be reviewed because students were successful with this program in the past. Thank you.
I'm not gonna say this right, I'm sorry. Sophia Borgia诺, Borgia诺? Close, maybe?
Good evening. I'm Sophia Borgia诺, and I am sophomore at Nation Ford High School. The Fort Mill School District prides itself on doing what is best for students. However, you are not being flexible for a small number of students who take swimming seriously. We take a course on Virtual SC, our, take, on Virtual SC. We are still registered for eight classes and adhere to the Virtual SC attendance by turning in work consistently. My dream is to go to a D-one school for swimming, and Lifetime Swim prepares me for this path. I've been swimming for over ten years, including being on the Nation Ford swim team since seventh grade. In order to make Lifetime Swim practice, I have to, had, I've had a virtual lab as my fourth block and have taken an elective course on Virtual SC. This allows me to leave school early to make it to practice and earn eight credits each ye school year. My mom passed away at the end of eighth grade year, and my dad has been a single father since then. He has to work, take care of my brother and me, and make me, and take me to all my swimming practices to help me pursue my dream career in swimming. With the amount, excuse me, with the amount of responsibility my father has, the virtual lab fourth block helps me to take practice without overwhelming him. And this changes for, and if this changes for next year, I will not be able to swim at Lifetime Swim due to transportation, and this will hinder my future opportunities at D-one schools. If Fort Mill School District truly wants to do what is best for their students, they will reconsider not allowing students to take Virtual SC course during a virtual lab fourth block. Thank you.
One other card is Sheila Eaton.
Hi, my name is Sheila Eaton, and I'm just going to, you're gonna make me cry too. You have seen how, you know, that not being able to have this flexibility for fourth block. I also have two children who are at Nation Ford. I have a swimmer as well. And I know that we keep talking about one sport here, but this, I think, can be addressed with every sport. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we, the clubs that we go to are in North Carolina. And you guys all know, we all know, that the North Carolina school system has different times that they let their kids out versus where the times that we let our kids out. And the club level that our children are at, we have to go to North Carolina because it gives us the best swimming against the best athletes, you know, around. My daughter, who is now a senior, has utilized the South Carolina Virtual since she's been at Nation Ford. It has allowed her to get to North Carolina, battle traffic, allow me to get her to practice, get back home to take care of my other two kids who are getting out then later. I will say very proudly, my daughter is going to the University of South Carolina, swimming D-one. And we could not have done that without having this virtual opportunity. And, you know, I'm very emotional right now for Sophia because I understand how hard that is for you to get to practice. And it might not seem like a big deal, that, that ninety minutes, but truly for these kids to come home, unload, get a few minutes, maybe, maybe dip into a core class and not a Virtual SC class, you know, that you can do on your own time, but maybe focus on a, a core class that you need to spend maybe ten, fifteen more minutes on at home before you jump in the car and you're back off to practice, three hours back home, et cetera. I feel like I'm kind of babbling here, but it, it was such an important, and is an important still to this day. My daughter still gets out at one-thirty every day, and she is in North Carolina swimming by three o'clock some days. And at practice for three hours back home. And she would never be able to be in the, the level that she's at or the, what her coach expects of her if she didn't have that opportunity. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you. As you know, we obviously aren't gonna make any decisions tonight, but thank you very much, and we certainly will, will take that under advisement. We have a handful of things on our agenda, some reports, first from the board for the few that went down to Columbia to meet with some of our legislators and talk about what's going on in this legislative session. I believe Lippi and Michelle were the only two that were able to make it this year, so any updates?
Dynamic duo, that's what we did.
Updates for the board and the public?
You wanna start, or you want me to start?
Well, I can start.
I say you start.
You've done it before.
Right, you start.
I was a rookie, and it was very eye-opening. It was, all of the York County delegation that we were able to talk with, they were lovely and, you know, polite and pleasant, and we were able to have, I think, civil, respectful conversation about areas where we disagree on funding, on how hold harmless doesn't feel like we're not being harmed. And how loosening restrictions for private schools that accept public money should be partnered and balanced with loosening restrictions for public schools. Like if, if they don't need to test, then why do we need to test? And I was glad that we found some places where we agree and some places where we were just told that's just not gonna happen. And, you know, that was my first time, so I was kinda like, but. But I, I do think we had positive conversations. Senator Johnson spent an impressive amount of time with us because it was during session, and he really did give us, I think, his ear for a while. And he gave us some suggestions that we could talk about later, about ways to partner with him. The fried chicken was excellent.
So it was, it was a typical day on the Hill. They were, both sides were in session, House and Senate, and they both started at ten. So while I had reached out to our delegation to set up appointments and times to see them, that went by the wayside because they ended up being in session. We did meet, like Lippi said, we did meet with our York County delegation. I think the only ones at the time that I didn't see, because I kinda had to leave her on her own for a little bit, I also had to do some state obligations, did not get the opportunity at that time to talk to Representative Pope or Representative O'Neill, but did talk to all of the others from York County. And then did not get to talk to Senator Clymer, but talked to all of the others from York County and closely surrounding. And we also took some Fort Mill paraphernalia to share with them just to make sure that they felt love and respected from us. But in doing that, I also made sure that they received the information pertaining to hold harmless and that it's not holding harmless and that, you know, we would respectfully ask them to investigate that and do what they can to fix that and at least extend that proviso into the coming year. And we basically were told, yeah, that's not gonna happen. There were a few other topics that we talked about. And, and I think that it's, it's some things to work with them in their offseason that will benefit not only our district, our county, but the state as a whole and, and education and whatnot. So I'm hopeful. I, I left there probably more optimistic than I have in quite some time. So, so we'll see. We'll see. The, the proof will be in the pudding when the pudding is served.
Well, I hate that I was not able to join you this year. I know the, the budget is obviously the primary thing that is still being discussed and debated. And I guess at our next meeting will be our first opportunity to really see what, what that mean, may mean for us depending on where things land at the state level. So we'll look forward to that discussion with Leann in a couple weeks. We do have a couple action items. The first one that's listed, four dot oh one, is the twenty-three, twenty-four strategic plan. Dr. Wakesness, if you wanna talk to us about that?
Yes. Good evening. We are gonna talk about the strategic plan, and since this is such a group effort to get the strategic plan built and renewed each year, I'm gonna have a couple people come up and join me, and first is gonna be Matt Roaring to get us started.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. This is really our annual update. You can see that we are in year two of five. This is a much shorter presentation than last year, luckily. Last year, we were going through our Cognia accreditation process and also developing our new five-year plan, so we had a little bit more to talk about last year. This year, it's purely just an update, so we will kind of fill you in on the specifics of that. But really, we're excited to share with you the reflection that we've had and kind of our plan for moving forward for the next few years. All right, so again, this is the year-two update of the current Fort Mill School District five-years, five-year strategic plan. We just wanted to make you aware that this isn't just something that happens overnight. This actually started back in two thousand nineteen. And it's not just something that we, the three of us, Renee, Mike and I, do in our office all day long. We do involve countless stakeholders, including students, teachers, administrators, parents, community members, board members, and more. So a lot of people are involved giving input for the plan, and that's really what we want to share tonight, including our timeline. But this is really the who, what, why, and how of the plan. So the who is really all those people that I just mentioned. We have our school, district, and community stakeholders, really a multitude of people that have given input into the plan throughout the past several years. Not only the development of the five-year strategic plan, but also the update for this year as well. It truly is, so the what is really a five-year roadmap for us. It truly is that roadmap that kind of takes us, has us reflect on where we have been, developing our current reality, and then looking at how we can, you know, develop some goals, strategies, and action steps that can really just continue our tradition of excellence here in the Fort Mill School District and make sure that we're continuously improving. That's really the why. We have that continuous improvement process going on throughout the whole year and throughout this whole five-year cycle. It's just an ongoing process where we're really digging into data and making sure that we have the, the best course of action moving forward to, again, continue that tradition of excellence. And then that leads into the how, and that's really where we look at our needs assessments by looking, really digging into the data really deeply with not only our district-level folks, but our, our school-level people as well to develop their school improvement plans. And that data really leads us to our performance goals, our strategies, and our action steps that we use to make sure that we are continuously improving as a district. And really, every year, we try to make the plan more actionable as we, as we go through each of our annual updates. So hopefully quickly, we can make it through this timeline here. So really, back again, this started back in two thousand nineteen, kind of pre-pandemic, where we were supposed to be having our Cognia visits, where they were come, they were going to come and give us our annual review for accreditation purposes. We started off with some focus groups back that, in that timeframe, but then we did end up getting a waiver when the world shut down in two thousand twenty. And we got a waiver from both Cognia and the, the State Education Department, so we didn't have to kind of perform those tasks during that year. But then things picked back, back up again when we got back to some sense of normalcy in the spring and summer of two thousand twenty-one. The needs assessment continued. We had some domain committees meeting to review the Cognia standards. And then also, Mike's gonna talk about our vision, mission, and core values, but we had several focus groups that met to kind of refine those and rehone those. So I really feel like that was a great kind of stepping stone into our Cognia accreditation review, which happened in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. We also completed our needs assessment. And through that review from Cognia, we were, we were able to develop our strategic plan based on what they uncovered as far as needs go and also what we had really found out during our needs assessment throughout the district as well. So really, then, we started on the work and dove full force into the district five-year plan last year from December through April. We had strategy committees working to develop the plan. We ended up having our stakeholder meeting, which several of you were involved with, back in February. And then school improvement plans were getting developed. And then last year, we got approval from you all a little bit earlier. But then after that approval, we were, we were able to submit the plan to the state. And we were lucky enough to get some, a nice compliment there from our friend, Mr. Pat, at the Office of State and Federal Accountability. He was able to tell us that our, our plan was one of the best that he has read. So really, the hard work paid off just through that quote alone right there. So that leads us to this year, and this is really the timeline that we'll have going forward for the next several years, where we have, it's really an eight-month-long process where we start in September for the annual updates. We do some pre-planning work with some data analysis and coordination of meetings and such. And then we move into October and November where some strategy committees are meeting to input data into the plan and discuss the plan and possibly some revisions to the goals, strategies, and action steps. Just this past November, we had our stakeholder meeting here at the DO, with several of you involved with that as well. February, March is when the school, school improvement plan work happens. And we, Renee and I take the schools through some data dives where they're updating their school improvement plans. And then they're taking that work back to their school improvement councils and their staff to update goals and action steps on their plans as well. And then they turn everything into us. We spend March and April kind of putting everything together. And then we're ready to submit to the states after, hopefully, we get the stamp of approval from you all tonight. We hit submit on that button by the end of this week, and we are ready to go for another year. Now I will turn it over to Renee, who's gonna talk to you a little bit about our needs assessment.
Good evening. I'm Renee Beck, Coordinator of Data Integration and School Improvement. And as Matt said, the needs assessment is a big part of the timeline that we work on. And we look at several pieces of data. As you can see up there, we look at our Cognia standards. We look at our Cognia reports. Our student achievement data is a big part of it. For our high schools, we have the college and career readiness. We also have survey data, and the surveys are completed by our students, our teachers, and our parents. We look at attendance data and teacher retention data, and also at the feedback we get from our many focus groups, as Matt just shared. And then we take all of this data and we try to determine what goals should we set. And that puts us to how we set up the plan. And this is just a picture. You have the whole plan in your packet, a picture of what the strategic plan looks like. So we developed the template based on what the state told us we needed to include. The plan always starts with an executive summary, and Mike wrote our executive summary this year, and it summarizes the key goals and the key strategies. But then the whole plan has the goal for every single area that we have. And on the template, so each goal has these four components. The first one is the goal area, so at the top, you'll see which box is checked for whichever goal it applies to. The second item is the performance goal, and that's in the middle. And that is the, is where we write out how, what number can we attach to this goal to see if we actually are gonna accomplish it. And so the, that performance goal is at the end of the five years. But then at the very bottom of the plan, you see the interim goal for which one, which number we're trying to hit for each of those five years. And then as you turn a couple pages, you'll see the strategies and action steps. And as Matt said, those strategies are the things we're trying to accomplish, and the action steps are how are we going to try to meet those actual numerical goals? That's my short and sweet part.
Okay, so I will take you through a high-level overview of the different goal areas. But as you can see, this plan is a result of a lot of work with a lot of people over a long period of time. So we're excited to present this to you tonight and go over some of the goal areas. So goal area one is about developing leadership capacity. One-one deals with leadership for continuous improvement. That deals a lot, if you look in the strategy, in the action steps, with Schoolzilla. You guys have heard a lot about Schoolzilla. That's the tool we use to help us with data and data gathering and putting it together in a actionable, actionable format for our school leaders. So you'll see a lot of action steps on Schoolzilla. The one point two is effective communication. And you will see in your packet, there's some information about some of the work our communications department has been doing in that area. Strategies one point three deal with educator quality, recruitment, retention, and evaluation. We know how important that is in today's day and age, making sure we are doing our very best to retain and recruit teachers. So you'll see some action steps dealing with that area. One point four focuses on leadership development and leveraging leadership potential. Our Leadership Academy, our AP Leadership Series, working with our teacher mentors, that is the types of goal, or the types of action steps you will find within that goal. Goal area two is learning capacity, kind of, I guess I would say, the, the meat of what we do in schools, making sure our students are learning as, accelerating their learning as much as possible. You will see a lot of goal area, not goal area, sorry, action steps on PLCs, teacher collaboration, making sure our teachers are working collaboratively for the best outcomes possible. You'll see also in there, grading is a pretty significant part, looking at our grading practices. Two point two and two point three, or I'll just say two point two, again, is the engaging rigorous curriculum and instruction. Goes hand in hand with two point one, again, kind of the meat of what we do in the school district. Two point three is talking about how we respond to students who need assistance, intervention, academic, and what we do to make sure we are providing our kids with all they need. You'll see a lot of information about CI three T in. You'll see a lot of information about CI3T in 2.3. Goal area three is resource capacity, talking about school climate, equitable resources, safe, clean, and healthy schools. You will see action steps with Rich Todd in there, with our safety plans, and making sure our schools are safe but also clean. I want to say, I have not told Brian Zolka this yet, I think Joe had to step out. Heard great feedback. I was talking to a couple administrators, and they were saying, what a great job Brian Zolka's doing in his new role, being extremely responsive to the school. So, meant to let Brian know that, I certainly will, but shouting him out in the presentation tonight. And then, 3.2, effective social-emotional learning and support. Making sure, again, our students feel safe at the school. So, if you look through that, it talks a lot about how our students report feeling safe at the school level. 3.3 talks about school climate, technology resources. What are we doing to integrate technology for our learning outcomes again? And then, the 3.4 is a lot of data stuff and facility planning. And I don't know if I can speak very eloquently towards that, but I'm sure Leanne would have any questions that you may have about the finances and Joe with the facility planning. And of course, we'll take questions on any of these after. I know I'm going through kind of quick. Goal area four focuses on equity building. And as a reminder, when we talk about equity in the school district, we are talking about making sure all kids have exactly what they need. As you've seen throughout our school spotlights this year, we have all different kinds of students. We have students with special needs. We have students that speak English as a second language and have different needs with that. We have students who come from poverty, and those bring different struggles. We have students who kind of already know the material before day one of class, and our job is to accelerate their learning as well. So, when we look at this, we think of, how can we make sure that all of our students, regardless of their individual circumstance, can perform at high levels? So, you will see the academic goals tied to, this goal area is increasing the graduation rate for students in poverty and improved academic outcomes for students in poverty. We don't just focus on students in poverty, but we can't have a goal for every different subgroup. But I can assure you, as a district, we are working to assist, help, and provide every subgroup with what we think they need to do well in school. But the academic achievement that's tied to this specific goal is focused on students in poverty. You know, with our graduation rate at 96%, that's extremely high. Our students in poverty, which typically, you know, lots of times, they face more struggles. Our graduation rate is still 88%, which is above the state average for all students, so a testament of the work we're doing. But we're certainly not happy with 88% or 96%. We want it to be 100%. Any questions on the goal areas, the strategies, before we move into the executive summary and vision, mission, and core values?
Yes. Go ahead, Joe.
You go. I'm calling you. You go first.
10-4. All right, so I'm going to have four questions at the beginning, and then, at the very end of the presentation, I'm going to have four more.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at 1.2, effective communication. Can you walk me through an exercise of what you mean by effective communication, please?
Joe, would you like to take that one?
Well, the strategic plan, we're looking at that twofold. So, we have to look at communication, not only with the community, students, parents, those types of, you know, service areas there, but also with our internal staff and, you know, getting out messages internally to them. What we're looking at here, just to kind of set the stage for you, is at the district level. So, all the schools are going to have their own communication plans and stuff in there. So, what we're looking at is at the district level, it's not necessarily what a school would be communicating to their staff or their family. So, from the very top level of it, we're going to look at, you know, we're going to start assessing all of the things that we have, that we have as communication tools, whether that's software, whether that's pre-built things like the PULSE that are in there, you know, if it's calls, texts, emails, those kinds of things. We're going to look at those, both internal and external, and see which ones we feel are effective, and we do that by looking at all kinds of different data. Click-through rates on our emails. We go back into Blackboard, and we check and see how many emails are opened. We can even tell if you answered the call and hung up before you heard the whole message. So, we do, we can tell if it goes to an answer machine. The system actually does report that data back to us. So, we use that a lot to go through there, and then, also, there are more of the, less of the data points and more of just the interaction points. You know, we talk, when we talk with our teacher forum, we talk about, hey, are you all hearing about stuff? Or what are the areas that you're, you know, that you've heard you need more communication in? You know, so there's the anecdotal data, and there's the data that we get that's more physical. So, just like with all the other groups that are in the strategic area, we take a lot of that. We come up with different things that we believe could address some of the things we think are out there. And then, we go into our committee meetings, and we sit down, and we talk with our committee, which also includes, you know, parents, students, staff members, administrators, all of that stuff. And we go through the same process that all the other, the groups do to determine what action steps need to be put into the plan. And I tell you, we heard some really unique ones this year that we had not heard before. A lot of times, when we do the strategic plan, we hear a lot of the same stuff, you know, repeated back to us, and we work on ways to improve it. This time around, we actually got some new stuff that came through. One of the ones was a way to have a, just a generalized feedback system that anybody in the community or the district could just provide feedback, whether it's positive, negative, neutral, whatever. So, that's something we'd never heard before, and now, we're looking at ways to implement that. The other thing about when we do this exercise, that we come across, a lot of times, things will cross-platform. So, matter of fact, Brian and I worked together very closely to identify a new system to be put in place for student communication directly from the teacher, coach, or, you know, other program leader. We worked to get rid of what we found out. We didn't even know we had a problem until we started getting some of that anecdotal feedback, where people were using everything under the sun to communicate, which was not regulated by the district. So, we couldn't control ads they might see, or it wasn't being tracked. So, from my goal area and Brian's goal area, we actually were able to identify an action step to be able to put one of those systems in place, which is now there. So, does that answer your question?
That's a great exercise.
Okay.
Thank you. Next question.
All right.
1.3, educator quality, recruitment, retention, evaluation. Two weeks ago, or our last meeting, Riverview gave a wonderful presentation. As you recall, I asked for clarification on a phrase or comment that was mentioned, which was, there was a belief that there was stronger teacher retention. Mentioned, and I asked for clarification. Question I have for you is, do you validate what Riverview stated?
Yes, I do, anecdotally, from being in schools for a long time and seeing the power of collaboration and how it helps teachers be better teachers and be more comfortable. But we actually have some data on that, too. When we looked at our teacher surveys that we've done a couple times this year, some of the questions were focused on trust and collaboration. And Renee's from our educator effectiveness director pulled this for me. 88% of our teachers reported that teachers at their school trust each other. A big part of collaboration is having that trust first, being vulnerable. Even, I think, more telling, 94% of our teachers say that they do meaningful work in their schools together in teams. That's an extremely high number, of course. And 92% of teachers at our schools help each other improve their instructional practice. And I know from being a former principal, bringing in new teachers, when a teacher is left on their own, it's really, really difficult. Teaching's hard enough anyway, especially when you're brand-new. But if you have a strong collaborative team in place that can help get that teacher going, get them kind of started, and get their feet underneath them, it'll help retain them in the long run. And I think the data from the teacher survey points to that.
Thank you. Third question. 1.4, leadership development, leverage leadership potential. Months ago, Mrs. Young, I can't remember if it was here, if it was at one of our teacher venues, or, Ms. Jocelyn, she's in the back. And so, okay, it was. So, she gave a wonderful presentation regarding Leadership Academy. And what I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was something about the Rutherford Group that we were using as a Leadership Academy. Is that correct, right? So, we made a pivot, which was we're going to operate that in-house.
Correct.
Can you give some feedback or bullet points on how that's going?
Certainly. And Jocelyn, I don't know if you want to come up and speak to that, but we have, the Leadership Academy is going strong. I think it has gone great this year. We love the stuff that Mike Rutherford did with us. We think it was very valuable, but we kind of shifted in-house to make it a more sustainable model. And I think our teachers, not our teachers, our principals have gotten a wide range of experiences, hearing from different facets of school and district leadership. So, Jocelyn.
Well, good evening, everyone. So, the Leadership Academy, actually, we finished out about a week and a half ago with Ms. Lordo. She presented on financial 101 for our principals, assistant principals, coordinators, and directors. I think overall, it's been a really good year. I actually just finished a survey today that I'm going to push out to everyone who attended Leadership Academy events, so they can give us feedback on the format, the topics, also what they want to see in the coming years. I'm super excited. I've been working with the Curriculum Department, with Mr. Olinger and Mr. Scroggs, and we have actually two things coming up this summer. For, we have two sessions. One is called, So You Think You Want to Be a Principal? And that is actually aimed at our assistant principals specifically. We think it's very important to kind of give them a clue into what it looks like to be a principal, because when you jump from the AP seat to the principal seat, it's a little different. So, we want to give them an opportunity to ask questions of some of our more seasoned principals, and that's in June. And then, we have one that we're pushing out to the entire staff of the Fort Mill School District, and it's called, So You Think You Want to Be an Administrator? So, we have 55 people who've signed up for that one, and our APs will actually be on the panel for that, because that's the first step into becoming an administrator, is becoming an assistant principal. I got a lot of feedback from teachers who were so excited that this opportunity is there, because I think a lot of people get into administration, and they're like, I think I want to do this. And then, they get in the seat, and they're like, I don't think I want to do this. And so, really, we're excited about the Leadership Academy and everything that we have. I can totally update you when we put out that survey, but we've got nothing but very, very strong, positive comments so far. So, we look forward to what we're going to do next year.
Great, thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
I'll wait until the end.
Okay.
I do, but I'll just wait.
So, for me, this is, I kind of struggle a little bit on this, because we seem to be very, very heavy-handed on everything equity. It seems to have a very, very large handle. In my understanding and just listening, it seems to be very geared towards outcomes of certain groups and not so much focused on the individual. So, this is where I kind of, I guess I struggle a little bit, because it sounds like the way we're interpreting this is acceptance. Like, we, of course, we want to be acceptable. But so, you can have, you can either have equity, or you can really kind of have equality, and they don't really intermix so much, because one means one thing and the other means another. And so, where equity is more focused on the outcomes, you know, this is not, it's not the same as, like, you know, equal opportunity, I guess you could say. And so, where I struggle is, this is what, you know, this is what we fought for, bled for, marched for, died for, is so that everyone can have an equal opportunity to be treated the same under the law. And you couldn't be discriminated against, right? Like, that's what it's all about. So, I want to know, how is this, like, to me, it cheapens that, is a way I could say it. It takes, and I don't want you to hear what I'm not saying, but it, I feel like it doesn't, it doesn't do justice to what's been done for us, is the way I could say it. So, how is that better than giving each of our students an equal opportunity for success?
Well, I think what I said before, how we define equity is giving everybody what they need to be successful, which is going to be different from student to student. A student that has a disability in speech is going to require different services from a student that doesn't have that disability. Or a student in a resource class are going to have different, students in resource classes are going to have different needs than your typical students. Our high-achieving students that are at the above-grade level, they're going to need different resources to reach their full potential, to get them where they need to be academically. So, in my view, equality is giving everybody the same thing, which isn't necessarily what everybody needs. When we look at equity, it's making sure they have what they need to be successful.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not looking at equality as, like, I'm looking at equality as customized, like, customized presentation. It's not like everybody's getting the same anything, not like a socialistic type of equality, like, free-market type of equality. Like, you get what you individually need. And so, I feel like we're kind of saying the same thing on that respect, but maybe I'm using it, because when I hear, like, hey, what does it mean? It's always, I'm hearing, well, here's what it means to us. You know, and so, it's very interpretable, if that's a word. Like, you can interpret it however you want it, and I may just be in, like, using, I may be interpreting it just differently than, so I would like to see something to where it, like, it means one thing and not like, hey, here's how we define it. Just to give us that, because I think, I think that, what I'm saying also resonates with what other people would also interpret that as. And I think that might be causing some of the division, maybe, on this word of, so if that makes sense.
Not sure the response.
Define what is meant by equity?
Yeah, we need a, we need a definition behind it, not how we view it, because then, it's just, it's just going to be open to interpretation.
Okay.
I'd have to look in the plan to see if there is a place that goes to that level of definition. You know, I know when I've heard about strategic plans for as long as I've been involved in the board, you know, we've always talked about unique needs of unique populations.
Yeah.
As, and I don't know that the equity buzzword came along until a few years ago, but the sentiment behind, unique students have unique needs, and therefore, we have different ways of meeting their needs, has been in place longer before, long before equity was a word that people got, got hung up on. So, I don't think our strategic plan has changed, because people have now become concerned about a term, right? I think, I think if we went back and looked at a seven-year-ago plan, I'm guessing the language that's used in the actual action steps is highly consistent.
And the plan says, in order to empower all learners to achieve their greatest success.
Correct. Well, yeah, and I'm not arguing with that.
But that's the definition. So, you asked for a definition. There is the definition.
But that's how weird.
As we implement it in Fort Mill School District, which is what is important to our Fort Mill School District's strategic plan. It is how Fort Mill School District defines what equity and what success for each individual student means and is, and how we deliver that for each and every student based on their need. It's not about what the state or this political group or that political group says.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not making it that. I'm not making it that. It's, I want to focus, I want to focus on getting outside of outcomes for groups and focusing on the individual, which is what you said, Dr. Wexness. And, and so, yes, Kristi, I agree. It's always been, that sentiment has been there, and then, the buzzword gets included. I would like to get away from anything that has buzzword on it.
Ms. Pratt, would you read that definition again, please?
I will. In order to empower all learners to achieve their greatest success. And then, that's the reasoning behind the strategy of having anything to do with. I mean, I just, I mean, what I'm hearing you say is that you don't like that word, because it's making a group instead of an individual. But when I read it, it sounds like all learners, so they're going to be treated as individuals, and they're achieving their own personal greatest success. And to me, that feels like what we, what we do.
I don't like the word, because it cheapens what brought us to where we are. That's why I don't like it. I think we could, I think we could do a better service to our community by putting something that had more concrete, concreteness behind it.
Well, our community was involved in putting this plan together. There's stakeholders from the community.
Some, yeah.
Well, 18,000-plus kids.
I do think that one of the things that is in the detailed plan, not in the executive presentation, with the individual goals, there are certain groups that, because they are outliers, are being measured uniquely, right? So, we're measuring graduation rate for everybody. And then, we're also measuring a subset, because there is a statistical difference in that subset. So, I think that's the reason that we've, we've... So, I think that's the reason that we've identified a subset of students who are not like, who are not reaching the same potential as the rest across the board. And so, that's, what do we need to do differently additionally for that subset? And that's why there's an outcome that's unique to that group, because they are a statistical anomaly, if that makes sense.
Turn your thing on.
Not only are they a statistical anomaly, but they're also evaluated and were held accountable on many state measures.
This, yeah, the state measures are reported by some group.
That are related to those subgroups, right? You know, so I think when you're looking at a strategic plan, and accountability is part of that strategic plan, you've got to account for subgroups. I mean, it's how we, as a district, are rated on our state report card. I mean, it is.
Right.
Right, so maybe this is a fundamental issue that we should be talking at the state level, with legislators, with people that are on state boards, to say, "This is how you're holding us accountable." It has to be a fabric of what we're doing in our strategic plan because of that.
Right, because that is directed by the State Board of Education and the State Superintendent.
But the one thing I will say is, every opportunity we get to use real words and full sentences instead of buzzwords is a benefit, right? So, there's not confusion about what it means. I think in any opportunity we get to spell things out in a, in a definition instead of just a term, it certainly works to keep us all on the same page.
Yeah.
So, fair point. I don't know exactly, I think you're going to get in a minute to the, what's actually recommended for presentation. This is kind of the update, but I don't know that this is what you're submitting for approval to the.
Well, the plans, yeah, the plans being submitted for approval, and this is just an overview of the plan, yeah.
Because we already previously approved the strategic plan.
Right, so when we, this time last year, you approved the new five-year strategic plan, and then we're required to do the update each year. And then, you approve it, you approve the update, and then we submit it to the state, and we do the same process next year, where we go through the different subgroups and get the feedback, and make any changes that are necessary, or that we feel like we need to change, and then it repeats five times over.
Right, got it.
So, for example, in the executive summary, if there's an opportunity to spell something out, maybe that's something we could still do.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, so the executive summary is, would be a time where we could, if it's not already clearly defined in there, where we can change that and define it.
And the same thing on some of the metrics. We could even say, "To align with state accountability measures," or something like, just things like that, that make it very clear what it is and why we're doing it. Fair?
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
So, the executive summary that we received, this is back from Cognia, but we wanted to keep it in, to remind us of the great work we do. "The culture of excellence is strong." That was a direct quote we got in our feedback from Cognia as we were building this plan. So, we'll continue to build on our strengths of our teachers, our leaders, our staff, our parents, our school board, community, and keep moving forward. Alright, so also, any more questions, I guess, on the strategic plan before we go to the mission and vision? Alright, so as part of this work too, we also worked on creating our new vision, mission, and, sorry, let me find, the core values. And we, usually when you do a new strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan, you'll often look at the vision, mission, and core beliefs, and it had been a while since we had updated those. I'm not sure exactly how long, but I know it's been since before, at least six years ago, before I was here. So, through the same groups and committees and some other ones, we looked at our vision, mission, and core beliefs, and I'm excited tonight to present the proposed vision, mission, and core beliefs. So, the first, the mission statement is on the screen, and you also have it in your packet. "In the tradition of excellence, Fort Mill Schools provide an engaging, rigorous education that empowers all students to achieve their greatest success." So, the mission statement is what we want to be able to achieve, why we exist as an organization. Our vision statement, "We will challenge and inspire all students to exceed their greatest potential and create a better community." That's what we hope to see happen because of our organization, what we want our organization to produce. And then, the core values, we, I think previously, we had about twelve of them, and it was really hard to remember all twelve. And if you ask anybody in the district to repeat the core values, they would probably have a hard time doing so. So, through the process, we really worked on cutting it down to four or five, and this is what we came up with. Students, "Children First Every Day," we wanted to incorporate that somewhere in all of this. That was the feedback we received. The "Children First Every Day," "All Means All," "Family," "Relationships Build Trust," and "Excellence Expect and Give Our Best." So, what other questions do you have, and then I'll ask for approval?
I'm going to have four questions.
Okay.
Are you sure? You only did three the last time.
Yeah, but I said at the beginning, I was going to have four, and then four at the end. Yes. So, yeah, I'm sorry about that, yes. Alright, so, first question. Serious question, Dr. Wexner.
Okay, I'm ready.
So, the first one is, what is the greatest threat to our district today?
I think, one, is the teacher shortage across the state. Luckily, it has not impacted us as much as other districts in the state, but we've seen our applicant pool shrink down in a lot of cases when we have openings. So, I think long-term, that is certainly a threat to our district. Also, I think, two, balancing our growth and holding on to what makes Fort Mill unique as we grow and get bigger and bigger and bigger. It's a lot, I don't know if people in one high school district would agree with this, but it seems to be, it would be a lot more challenging to run a three-high school district than a one-high school district, or a five-high school district than a three-high school district, just because there's that many more hands in the pot, so to speak. So, I think that the teacher, the looming teacher shortage, and also balancing our growth.
Dr. Wexner, I would, the only thing I would say slightly different, you talk about teacher shortage, which I think is the primary piece, but resource shortages overall.
Certainly.
Because being able to have special-needs assistants, and enough bus drivers, and enough cafeteria workers also has an impact on the ability to effectively run the schools in a way that allows the teachers that are there to focus on what they need to get done. So, I think it's a little bit bigger than just teachers, although they are, you know, the front line that is so important.
Yes.
So, back to the earlier question, when I was asking, or I had called out Riverview, when Riverview was here, and their choice of using, that what they were doing had an influence on teacher retention. So, are we leveraging, or is there a plan to leverage the kind of that conversation into this plan regarding retention?
Well, we have a, through our HR department, we have our Educator Effectiveness Director, Renee. I don't know her exact title, but it's something to that effect. So, I know there has been a concerted effort to really look at retention recruitment through the surveys that I mentioned, the results before, going out to career fairs, going out to colleges, different universities, and speaking to the students earlier and earlier in their education careers, because there's such a high demand for them. And you mentioned specifically River Trail, talking about that trust and collaboration. I think that is so key, and that our data backs that up. When the teachers feel supported by each other, they're going to, they're going to be more likely to stay in the profession.
Thank you. Second question, what is a significant opportunity for the district?
Well, I think continuing to build on the collaboration that we do. I think if you look at all of our schools and the collaboration, very high levels at lots of our schools. Some of our schools are just starting down that road, and that's okay. It's traditionally harder to get that started in the high schools, but our high schools are willing to do it, and they do a lot of collaboration already, and it's just moving that collaboration to more of a structured collaboration. So, I think that is a great opportunity. If we could take that and expand it even more, we'll get even better results.
Thank you.
I know you didn't ask me, but I would like to add, because we've talked about it here a lot. We are always looking at ways to expand our offerings too.
Yes.
You know, we've talked about more CATE programs. We've talked about, you know, expanding music programs, expanding cosmetology, offering things at all of the high schools, so that there's more opportunity, right? So, it's, I think the coordination among staff members is how we do it best. And then, what we offer, the world's changing. We got to have, we got to have new opportunities for our students as, you know, as new careers come up.
Certainly, and that's a great point. And we have grown tremendously over the last several years with the different opportunities, with our dual credit, our dual enrollment, from the traditional academic courses to the welding and auto body collision repair program. So, that's a, that's a great point, too.
Keep those in mind.
I just want to add, the whole thing that Ms. Spears talked about, resource allocation, is we grow. Things like Hold Harmless, Leanne speaks to this more eloquently than I do. Keeping up with the growth, providing capacity in the buildings with new bonds, building new schools, asking our taxpayers to support us in that regard, which means financially. This is challenging to a growing district in this climate that we are creating in the public school system here at the state level. I mean, a lot of dollars are going to private schools, and that's, you can debate that all day long. It hurts, it hurts us, because we're growing. We're unique in South Carolina. We're not one of the, I like to think we're one of the shining stars, and we, so this is a challenge for us, or an, I think that's what she asked for, Anthony. What was her biggest challenge? I just think it all comes down to resource allocation, and that, that's people, that's resources, that's buildings, that's, that's teachers, you know, you talk about the challenge that the public is, the challenge our public schools are under right now, and in a lot of areas, is why a lot of people, I believe, are losing a lot of our teachers. But I'm not here to debate that tonight. I'm just saying, those are challenges for us as a fast-growing district and a high-performing district.
Those, the lack of financial support is a threat that prevents us from achieving additional opportunities.
Third question, what do you believe is a significant weakness within our district?
That's a tough one to answer, because I think I would want to pair that with the opportunity that it also presents. And I think a possible weakness is, as we continue to grow and get new teachers, there's a lot of onboarding to do. And I don't mean onboarding from the sense of, you know, getting their paperwork in and all that background check, but getting them accustomed to how we do school in the Fort Mill School District. How are they going to be brought up to speed on our grading policies and practices, on our collaboration, on how they do things that each different, you know, a little bit different at each school? So, I think one of the weak, could be a weakness, is what are we going to do to make sure all of our new people get accustomed and feel like they belong to our community, and want to stay here and be part of something great? And then, that could also be an opportunity to make sure we're doing a great job at that.
And you came close, but I would add, our traditions, our expectations, and the expectations of our public, our parents, have incredibly high expectations, and it's, not everybody can make it in a Fort Mill School.
Certainly.
Teaching.
I agree.
Last question.
Alright.
What is the greatest strength of our district?
So, I. The school board, anything else?
Good answer, good answer.
You know, I always go back, since I'm the curriculum person, I always go back to our academics. Our academics, bar none, are usually the top in the state by pretty much any metric. Whenever there's national metrics, we typically always outperform the national average by a pretty good margin. When you look at our graduation rate, it's just, I'm blown away every time I think about our graduation rate, how high it is. And I just go back to academic performance. Probably somebody in a different department would have a different answer. But the work that our, that our kids do is second to none.
And I think a lot of that is because of our community, because we are made up of people who want their kids to succeed.
Right.
Right, and therefore, they, not only does the school provide every opportunity, the families, the partnership, I mean, I think the community as a whole, people are here because they value academics and education.
Yes, and I think to go off what Michelle said earlier, not everyone could cut it in the Fort Mill School District as an employee. You have, we have really high expectations for you, and you see, when we go to our school visits and the teachers come up here, just the amount of hard work they put into it, and the dedication that they put into their careers and our students is quite amazing.
I was in Tampa a month ago-ish, and our graduation rates became a very large topic of conversation with a southeast group that I was meeting with. And they could not believe what we produce, and they were just, they were like, "Wow."
It really is amazing. It really is.
Because they graduate, and they graduate with high honors and opportunities, and, you know, not just getting by kind of graduation rates.
Right, yes.
So, for acute clarity, so this evening, we're, I'm just, we're voting on, so it has nothing to do with the summary?
So, the executive summary is part of the, so when we submit to the state, we have to submit several documents. One of them, the actual strategic plan that you have the PDF. We do an executive summary that we kind of explain from a high level, some of our important goals, and then there's a few other plans in there.
A memo that goes along with it, is that what it is?
Basically, yes.
And where we plug in whatever were the achievements for whichever category. So, like, when I look at, of course, I closed it, go figure. When I look at the strategic plan, we're updating the twenty-one, twenty-two information, we're getting ready for the twenty-two, twenty-three information.
So, it's the exact document that's sitting here in the materials?
Yes, yes. This document is the full strategic plan with all the updated data, ready to go. But then, in addition, like, introductory piece, I guess, is the executive summary. Kind of like, if you ever look on the school report cards, they have an executive summary that the principal and SIC chair writes, similar to that.
Descriptive piece about the district, right?
Yes.
And it's the plan that we previously, last year, already approved. So, it's basically just updated with the latest.
With the new numbers. So, I don't believe any strategies or goal areas really changed.
My question is, are there any actual new line items? I know the numbers are new as the years progress, but I don't, I didn't believe that we've added any whole.
We have not added any goal areas or strategies. There might be some additional action steps. So, you know, once we took the data from the first year and saw what happened, we may have created a new action step, like a to-do item, but the strategies and the goal areas are the same.
So, we need to vote on this tonight?
Correct.
Yes, well, I'm asking you to, to vote on that tonight.
What I think I heard is it's due to be submitted on Friday.
Correct.
Correct, and that is a requirement, again, by the State Board of Education and the State Superintendent. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to approve and submit the updated strategic plan as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the updated Fort Mill School strategic plan to be submitted to the State Department of Education. Is there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. That motion does carry.
Thank you.
And we do have one other action item as well, which is the approval from.
I was unclear, I don't know if y'all got it, was the no?
Two noes, five yeses.
No means.
They don't support the plan or approve the submission.
I thought we might need to go to a show of hands, we can get it right, okay.
Mr. Burke is up to talk about the branding proposal that he brought to us last meeting.
Yes, we are coming back to you for approval tonight. We're submitting for approval. Bring it in in just a second. So, as we talked before, obviously, nothing has changed with the logos that were presented, but we're going to run through them just real quickly one more time to refresh your memories, and have a science or any additional questions that you guys may have about the branding portion. So, without further ado, this is the primary logo that we showed you last time. As you can see, there are two different stacks for the primary. There is just the FMSD, and again, featuring the graduate as our main purpose of the logo, and then, of course, the FMSD with Fort Mill School District underneath it. Either of these two could be used as the primary logo for the district. You'll see four colors on the right, as we discussed before. We do have splits in the colors. We have primary colors, the main colors that will be used, for example, like our website, our app, those types of things will be the navy and the lighter blue. Our secondary colors that would be used only as accents, and never would you see these four colors together other than in the district logo, the primary logo, are the green.
uh, are the green and red that are at the bottom. Um, so those are stacked, uh, that way. Uh, again, the main purpose of putting the logo together this way was to incorporate the graduate as our key feature uh, and make it stand out more than it does in the.
In the eye.
The multiple versions that we have currently. Um, and then of course, being able to use it as just FMSD, which is one of the most recognizable things that we learned from all of our feedback from committees and, and such, uh, that, that people do know the district and call the district by FMSD instead of the FMS. Um, the secondary logos, secondary mark is just the graduate alone. Again, we've never done that in the district. That is actually a, a, a very unique, uh, graphic and we've never actually set it up as a standalone official, uh, symbol for the district. So we want to do that in this program. Again, we also have the black and white version, so you guys could see what it would look like if we went single color with, uh, our standard district primary logo. And then the official seal, again, is pretty much exactly the same with the exception of we went in and removed all of the gradients that were in it. And there were a lot of gradients, which makes that exceptionally hard to print, put into decals, all of those things. So, um, the gradients could still be used if we ever wanted to do a fancier version, like the one that is in the office back there. There's no reason you can't have them, but that adds a much higher additional cost when you're including that in there, instead of being able to do a single color vinyl or a two-color vinyl, um, die-cut decal, which is mostly what gets used if you're doing, you know, large external stuff. Um, so that being said, these are the, uh, the logo package, the branding package that we're looking to present to you guys tonight for approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions or that I can.
Can you talk just for a second about the, the rollout approach and, and.
Sure, yep, um, obviously we're not going to flip a switch and change everything tomorrow. Um, you know, there would not be anything that is required to do immediately. Uh, I can tell you this by the number of questions I get in the hallway. We have a lot of departments that this is the time of year, they like to order refresh of shirts and things like that. So they want to be able to use this instead of the old logo. And the, the worst-case scenario was that, that if this got delayed again, that they would then order in the old logo and then at some point during the year, we would have this. So timing-wise, it actually fits pretty well for the normal cycle for a lot of the stuff. Um, a lot of things would just be rotated in as they reach end of life. For example, business cards. We're not going to go out and buy new business cards at this point. As people reorder, they will now get the new designs that come with that. Um, we've been in talks with one of the local printers here about setting up a, an actual just reorder site. That's been really slow to come to fruition, not on our behalf, so we're hoping that will speed up when we get to this point. Um, and then things like decals on vehicles, those types of things, that can be a decision. It can be as the vehicle's retired, you can make the train, the transition over. Or we could possibly even work with some of our schools, some of our high schools that have vinyl die-cut, uh, classes and work with them to be able to obviously cut costs down. Um, you know, there are a couple of things that may be a little bit higher cost because you have to go to a signage company. For example, if we swap out the, the building logo here, we'd have to go to a signage company. But those are one-offs because again, we're, we only have one district office. We're not really, you know, it's not like it has to go across all twenty school sites. Um, so it'll just be a phase in, but we will have a public campaign over the summer leading into the beginning of the school year.
What about the websites?
Yeah, website, so that's, that's actually a twofold deal. Um, as you saw in the strategic plan, one of the things we're currently doing right now is again, revamping our website because the company we went with last year was purchased. Um, and now we're having to roll our website. So with a little bit of forethought, we have two versions right now. We can go with the existing, uh, red and tan scheme. Really hoping not to do that, especially having, having seen the scheme that looks with the navy and the light blue as our, our key features. Uh, so we'll be able to flip the switch on that right away. When we, when we make the launch, if we have an approved, uh, graphic, we'll be able to do it.
That's not an incremental cost, that's just.
Oh, no, that's just, that's already built in, yeah. And a matter of fact, even some of our other systems that are in place, um, for example, we actually just put in, uh, a new FOIA system through Granicus, which is a, a software company that has now a, an online FOIA tracking system for us. It allows us to better track how we receive, answer and, and store documents. They already have a pre-built-in, uh, as part of our contract revamped because we told them that we were going to be getting a new logo. And they said, well, actually we offer you every, once every year, a chance to revamp your site. So when you get your stuff approved, give us a call, we'll change the colors and change the logo. So, a lot of that kind of stuff's gonna happen. Um, and again, it's, it's a rollover, um, situation. There are costs associated here and there, but a lot of that's going to be dependent upon the department and what they're in process of doing. And it may be costs that already exist for reorder.
All right, Joe, so ma- maybe that, that just kind of answered it. It might not be, it might not be very fair to say, do we have an estimate on a, like, a cost analysis of the rollout?
I don't know that you could put an estimate on it, because again, a lot of this stuff is going to be normal cycle replacement. We're just giving the printer or the shirt maker or the decal maker a new graphic.
Right.
Um, the only thing that would be, again, would be a new cost would be if you're changing building signage or if you're gonna go ahead and replace something that's not in the replacement cycle. Um, and again, those are all conversations we'll have now that we have this because again, that'll be, you know, they may decide to do that and it's a budget question or they may decide, okay, we're gonna wait till we cycle in the new stuff.
But what I'm hearing is that you don't have a plan to engage some third party to come in and swap out everything you have with, with this new logo on buildings and stuff like that overnight, is what.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely not, and I've, I've never, I've done multiples of these at different times. They, they've never been phased in. I mean, if you look at the way our schools did it recently too, some of the ones that I've helped redesign, they're gradual. You can still go to, you know, Fort Mill Middle School and see some of the old logo that they had mixed with some of the new one that I designed for them because it's as things, as they paint walls and stuff like that, they're replacing things out. Um, and that's the approach we would take. Now, again, we're gonna have a public campaign about it and the main things like the website and the, you know, the apps and, and that kind of stuff, we'll have that new branding on it. But no, there's not a, there's not a, anybody's gonna come in and just make a sweeping change and, and do that.
Joe, I got one more thing to say, just more of a comment.
Yep.
Uh, just, uh, just pretty much like I just said, thank you, uh, for all your work on this. I, I don't think, I don't think whenever this thing started, you, you know, you probably thought it was gonna drag out like quite this long and look quite this way. Um, you know, the, the first I even heard about this stuff, I wasn't, I wasn't even up here, right? And so it's, it's been a long process and, and, uh, you've put a lot of hours that nobody has seen. Um, you know, and you've done a lot of work, uh, behind the scenes to really make sure that you really gave us your best. And honestly, I just, I, I appreciate all the work that you've done. I'm, I'm very, very pleased with, with, with what you've come up with.
Well, I, I appreciate that. It was a long process, but the ultimate goal is to get something everybody's happy with. And I hope that that's where we've gotten tonight, so thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration for new district branding and logo as presented this evening.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the new district logo and branding as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries and you can go start ordering new stuff.
Anyone who's emailed me, you'll get your files tomorrow.
I want my shirt.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel recommendations, contractual, contractual issues and legal issues.
Second.
We will move into executive section. Thank you all for coming, have a good evening.
Ms. Logan? I need something.